Famous, we're absolutely famous. Without a doubt, without a doubt. But you know, that's infamous.
Am I supposed to read this? Oh, same. Okay, great, thank you.
You ready, Sue? Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to this meeting of the Capitola City Council. And we will begin with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Harlan.
Here.
Councilmember Norton.
Here.
Councilmember Bator.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Story.
Here. And next we have the pledge of allegiance, and I'm gonna ask Councilmember Bator to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have a couple of presentations. And the first presentation is in recognition of Poetry Month. And we do have a proclamation. The mayor's proclamation designating April 2014. And I know we're a little bit late with that. But for National Poetry Month. And whereas the Academy of American Poets established the month of April as National Poetry Month in 1996. And the National Poetry Month is now the largest literary celebration in the world. And the legacy and ongoing achievement of American poets is extraordinary. Poetry is an essential part of the arts and humanities and inspires artists in other fields such as music, theater, film, dance, and the visual arts. And the Capitola City Council celebrates the beauty of language and the vistas of imagination poetry creates. Acknowledges the importance of poetry in education and appreciates that poetry can enhance our understanding of ourselves and our appreciation of others. The city council takes pride in Capitola's diverse accomplished poets. And a commemoration like National Poetry Month encourages our recognition and enjoyment of poetry. And now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Capitola recognizes National Poetry Month. And I, Mayor Story, call upon public officials, educators, librarians, and all of us in Capitola to observe the ongoing enjoyment of poetry. And with that, it's my pleasure to now ask and introduce Jim Brown, who is the Grants and Technical Assistance Manager of the Arts Council of Santa Cruz County, to receive the proclamation. And then you have an introduction to do as well, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor Story, and members of the city council. It's an honor to receive this proclamation on behalf of the Arts Council, the Santa Cruz County Office of Education, Poetry Santa Cruz, and the Santa Cruz Public Library System, all the members that support the Santa Cruz County Poet Laureate Program. It's my honor also to be able today to introduce the 2014-2015 Santa Cruz County Poet Laureate. Ms. Ellen Bass is here to read a poem for us. And just a few words about Ellen. She has lived in Santa Cruz since 1974, where she's been a writer and a teacher since that time. Her recent book, Like a Beggar, has just been published by Copper Canyon Press, and her poems have appeared in the, let's see, the National Poetry Review, the New Yorker, The Atlantic, and many other publications. So I'd just like to welcome Ellen Bass to the podium to read one of her poems. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here and glad that you would like to have poetry come to Capitola. And excuse my back, but you'll be able to hear well through the microphone. I'm gonna read a poem that was inspired by my son. My son's a farmer in California. And one of the great things about some of these young farmers is their passion and enthusiasm not only for farming but for other things. And so every harvest day, they share a poem together before they begin to do the harvest, which I just think is about the coolest thing in the world, farmers reading poetry before they start to harvest. And so I took it upon myself to suggest some poems to him, which he was glad to have. And he shared one with his farm crew, and they had some doubts about it, and it led to this poem. It's called "Reading Neruda's Ode to the Onion." "My son brings the poem to his farm crew, gathered with coffee in the makeshift lean-to. Seven AM, the sun already at its green work. And they don't believe it when Neruda says the onion is more beautiful than a bird with dazzling feathers, a heavenly globe, the dance of the snowy anemone. These young people bury the black seeds; weed, water watch over them, then pull the fat bulbs from the sweet dirt. I've seen my son walk the rows, nudging the drip hose over the small shoulder of soil toward the stem of a plant. I say, 'Long live their insistence on reality; may they always muddy their hands in the actual, handle the hard evidence of the earth.' But if Neruda could stretch the accordion of time, he'd explain that when he says he loves the onion more than the birds, it doesn't mean he loves the birds less. When he thinks of the onion, there is nothing but onion-ness, translucent sleeves that give way to only themselves. When he praises the onion, nothing else exists, like nothing else exists in the center of the onion, like nothing else exists when you fall in love. The rest of the world goes silent for a while, and then the earth starts to turn again; seasons reappear. You get hungry and want a sandwich; one day you read a book; you may even fall in love with someone else. The great ones regard every moment like this, catch it as it swims, onion, bird, flower, fish, the way a bear scoops a salmon from the river. They love the oily orange flesh and the fins, the pewter eye, the slimy entrails and the harp of bones. The masters eat everything, right up to their death, and then they grab that too in their failing fist.'" Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Ellen, and thank you, Jim, for being here this evening to share this poetry and to share Poetry Month with us. And I just want to comment, you know, it's very, somehow very comforting to hear the poetry, and particularly in these chambers. And maybe just as farmers do, if more politicians read poetry before every of their meetings, this may be a better world. So thank you so much for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation in recognition and appreciation of Les White. Is Les here this evening? So it looks like he's not. I did want to, I'll go ahead and acknowledge, because we actually kind of have a watershed moment going on with the Metropolitan Transit District, because the longtime executive director, Les White, is retiring. And the city of Capitola wanted to recognize that event, recognize his achievements over the many years. Les joined the Metropolitan Transit District on November 3rd, 1997, as the general manager. And he's only the second general manager since its inception. And during that period of time, he's worked diligently to increase service levels and ridership. And some of his successes include the Joint Powers Adventure with the Valley Transportation Authority, the Capital Corridor Joint Powers Authority, Caltrans through Amtrak to fund and run the Highway 17 Express Service. He was also instrumental in bringing Paratransit Service in-house called Paracruz. This service provides transportation to individuals who are unable to use the fixed routes service. And so Les is retiring after 42 years' career as a general manager with the Transit District. And his career's included two terms: as chair of the American Public Transportation Association, numerous transit facility construction projects, enhancement of services and assistance in writing legislation, ensuring the continued funding for small and medium-tier transit agencies. So I, as mayor, and on behalf of the city of Capitola, want to acknowledge and extend our deepest appreciation to Les White for his years of service and wish him the best in his retirement years. This proclamation is gonna be delivered to last, I believe, on Saturday. There's gonna be a special ceremony for him in Scotts Valley. And unfortunately, I can't be there, but I think one of our representative to the Transit District Board, Ron Graves, will be there to deliver the proclamation to Les White. So with that, we'll move on to the report on closed session.
Good evening. City council met with legal counsel regarding an existing litigation matter of Leonard versus City Capitola, and there was no report of action taken.
Thank you. The next item is number four, which is additional materials. We did receive a revised agenda packet, which the only change to the agenda was to include the presentation, a proclamation for Les White, which I just read. And aside from that, I don't think there were any other materials presented to us here at the dais. Next, we'll have item number five, which is additions and deletions to the agenda. Does staff have any requests for additions or deletions?
No changes other than the revised agenda, which was distributed.
Right, okay, thank you. Councilmembers, any requests for additions or deletions from tonight's agenda?
Move the agenda.
If there's a motion to approve the agenda, as it is, is there a second?
Second.
This motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Which brings us to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you would like to speak to the council, please step up and speak your mind. Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public comments portion of our meeting, which will bring us to the city council, city treasurer, staff comments. Let's begin with staff comments. None? City treasurer?
No comment.
No comments, and councilmembers?
Always comments.
All right, yes, Mike.
First, I'd like to congratulate the Art and Cultural Commission for generating the new Capitola app for the iPhone. It is historic walk-around Capitola, where you can see old pictures of historic buildings. You can take then-and-now pictures, where the existing building can be snapped in the moment, and it can superimpose it over the historic photo. It's fascinating. You can send text postcards to people, because we've ruined the mail with email, we may as well ruin postcards with, you know, video postcards. It's fabulous. It also shows every app project in Capitola on a Google map, tells you how to get there, tells you about the art project. It's free if you go to the App Store, if you're a lucky Apple iPhone user, and just type in Capitola, the app will come up. Let us know how you like it. This Wednesday on 5/14, 7:00 AM, Coconacro Ballroom, we'll be having the American Red Cross Santa Cruz Chapter Heroes Breakfast. Come on down, have breakfast with us, and see real, live heroes and hear their stories. On the 15th, Thursday, 6:00 PM, at our wonderful Bargetto Winery, we'll be holding the fundraiser for the kickoff of the this year's Art and Wine Festival, the theme being Cowboys and Cabernet. Get out your Pearl Snap shirts, your cowboy boots and spurs, and come on down and join us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Yeah, Dennis.
I have a couple things to add. First of all, I'm elated at how well the Open Streets came out on Sunday. It was probably one of the busiest days in the history of the village, with majority of the people that came down there riding their bike. And there was probably, in the bike racks for bike parking, there was probably at one time, close to 600 bikes that we counted at one time, and people down there joined the village. And so it was a good family community day, and I think all those, including public works, for helping us put that together. I'd like to make a request of our representative to the Metro District that we get an update report on what is going on with the Metro and whether we are expecting any new service in our community, or what is new with the Metro and what are they doing for us. And a new business opened today, and it's called Santa Cruz Arts. And it's in the Capitola Mall. And what it is, it's a store opened and owned by local artists in Santa Cruz County. It's right at the entrance to the mall where you come out of the Target building. So please, come down there and see it. It's just a great display of local art, and you have to be a Santa Cruz County resident to contribute in there, and a number of Capitola people are in there, and they had their grand opening today. And so if you get a chance, go by and check it out. It's really a great experience.
All right, thank you, Dennis. And Jimmy, you will contact Ron Graves and let him know of Dennis's request?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Just one quick comment. In addition to the Open Street program, I want to acknowledge the city parking lot, temporary parking lot, was open for the first time. And at one point, approximately 2:00 in the afternoon, both lots were full, and it looks like the lot was a huge success. So I am looking forward to whatever the schedule is for its opening. Do you know what that schedule is for a permanent opening? We're looking at Memorial Day for the permanent opening.
Great.
Okay, Stephanie?
We went on a lovely tour of Elkhorn Slough with Save Our Shores, and some local elected officials and their family and friends and staff members, and fabulous. If you haven't gone out there, it's a wonderful boat ride and a wonderful chance to see the creatures of the marine sanctuary up close.
All right, thank you. So with that, well, it brings us to item number eight, boards, commissions, and committees appointments. It appears that we have none this evening, which will bring us to the consent calendar. These are items of a general administrative nature, which will be handled with one vote unless an item is pulled by either a member of the public or a council member. There's actually only two items this evening. Does any member of the public wish to pull an item? Seeing none, councilmembers?
Move consent.
There's a motion, and a second to approve this consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Which will bring us tonight to our general government business, public hearings. The first item is to receive an update regarding the Santa Cruz County Library Joint Powers Authority. The recommended action is just to receive the update report. And staff report?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers? This is gonna be an update on sort of the goings-on regionally with our libraries. As the city council is aware, and I'm sure our community is aware, that the city provides library services collaboratively with the other cities and the county, and the county together. We all have put in together to form what's called a Joint Powers Authority, with the exception of Watsonville, which provides library services independently. We have two different Joint Powers Authorities, two different agreements by which we work with the other cities in the county to provide library services. One agreement is the Library Financing Authority, which is essentially the entity that takes in all the money to the library districts and then passes it back out. And another is the Santa Cruz Public Library's Joint Powers Authority, JPA. So you're gonna hear me use the acronym JPA and LFA a lot. When I'm talking about the LFA, I'm talking about the Library Financing Authority. When I say JPA, I'm gonna talk about the entity that's responsible for the operations of all the libraries in the county, with the exception of Watsonville, including our Capitola library. There are 10 or 11, depending on how you want to count, different branches of the library system here in Santa Cruz, including our Capitola branch, as well as the Bookmobile and the online site, which is of growing importance. I do want to also mention that Teresa Landers, who's our library director, is here tonight to help answer questions should anything come up as a result of my presentation. You'll recall, oh, the funding that comes into our library systems comes from two primary sources. One of those is the sales tax. There's a permanent sales tax in this county that's received by the Library Financing Authority and then distributed to the two different library systems in the county, Watsonville's and then our JPA. In addition, in Capitola and in the county and in Scotts Valley, there's a little property tax peel-off called the County Library Fund that goes in to help fund the libraries. And the cities of Watsonville and Santa Cruz make a general fund contribution. The difference in why they make a general fund contribution versus a property tax peel-off really has to do with some, the vestiges of Prop 13, and it just has to do with how each of the individual cities was funding library services at the time the Prop 13 passed. So that gives you a little bit of a picture of how the money that comes into the library system, where it comes from. Now, you'll recall that Teresa Landers came before our council, I believe, nine months ago maybe, and made a presentation about the facilities master plan that they completed. And what they did when their facilities master plan was took a look at all the different branches and what the needs were to transition each one of the branches into a 21st century library, that met modern standards, that served the community as well as possible. And that the facilities master plan called out the explicit improvements, or in some case, complete renovation, or new library in our case even, that would be necessary to get there. That model was then costed, and there's an identified about $63 million total funding need to bring all the libraries in the county up to modern standards, if you will. And included in that 63 is funding to build a 13,000-square-foot Capitola branch, which is currently located in Portables, that have exceeded their planned life at this point by probably several years already, and it's very much time to put those, put the Capitola library into a regular building. The library JPA has completed polling, community-wide polling, that indicates real good support for the libraries, library debt issuance, to fund this work. Our community as a whole is very proud of its libraries and is very interested in seeing them, based on the poll results, very interested in seeing them brought up to current standards, and potentially very supportive of a potential bond measure. There are some issues, though, with doing a bond measure. One of those, in particular... And that the facilities master plan called out the explicit improvements, or in some case, complete renovation, or new library in our case even, that would be necessary to get there. That model was then costed, and there's an identified about $63 million total funding need to bring all the libraries in the county up to modern standards, if you will. And included in that 63 is funding to build a 13,000-square-foot Capitola branch, which is currently located in portables that have exceeded their planned life at this point by probably several years already, and it's very much time to put those, put the Capitola library into a regular building. The library JPA has completed polling, community-wide polling, that indicates real good support for the libraries, library debt issuance, to fund this work. Our community as a whole is very proud of its libraries and is very interested in seeing them, based on the poll results, very interested in seeing them brought up to current standards, and potentially very supportive of a potential bond measure. There are some issues, though, with doing a bond measure. One of those, in particular, is that the maintenance of effort, which is the property tax and the general fund contributions from the cities of Santa Cruz and Watsonville, the formulas that are embedded in that have remained static since 1996, nearly 20 years now. And what's happened over that time is that the formulas have gotten a little bit out of whack, and they need to be adjusted at some point. In addition, another issue for our JPA is that the JPA, again, this is the entity that provides library services, is set to expire in 2017, which is coming up relatively shortly. And then another problem is that neither of the two JPAs, the operations or the financing authority, has the authority to place a tax measure on the ballot. So the library director identified this potential, this issue, and what the library board did was directed the managers, the city managers for the various cities, as well as the county administrator, to work together on options to resolve these issues. So the library administrators, sorry, the city administrators have been meeting over the last seven months and looking at these issues. There's no final recommendation from this group that will be, that is being made tonight, but what I can tell you is that there is, looks like we have consensus that the basic suggestion that we would make is to revise the LFA, that's the financing entity, to allow it to place a tax measure on the ballot. And in addition, we would clean up the maintenance of effort formulas, basically to account for the changes in demographics and property taxes that have taken place over the last 20 years, so that the funding is more equalized on a per capita basis than it is today. And it will continue to be moving forward. So that's the changes that we would recommend, we're looking at recommending making to the LFA. On the JPA side, the operational JPA side, I think we need to keep in mind that the JPA is set to expire in 2017. Whether we need to amend it today or not is probably an open question. It's gonna need to be addressed in the next several years, and when it's addressed, I think some key things that we're gonna need to look at is modifying the relationship between the JPA and the city of Santa Cruz. Currently, the city of Santa Cruz provides all the services, provides all the library services, all the librarians that work for the JPA work for the city of Santa Cruz, and whether it becomes a contract with the city of Santa Cruz or exactly how, I think that that's something that probably needs to be addressed. I think we need to identify equity of service as a real basic tenant of the new JPA. I think the concept behind that is, is that, you know, you're not gonna get the same hours at every single library. You know, there's different needs at some of the smaller branches than there are at Maine, for example. But that doesn't mean that we can't strive to provide equity of services to people throughout the county. Doesn't mean that everybody is gonna be exactly the same distance from a library, but we need to at least have that as a basic tenant, so that when we're looking at our different resources, we're looking at providing services efficiently, and we're also looking at equity. We also need to evaluate the governing board composition. We've heard a lot of comments, and there was previously a newspaper article, you'll recall, about some of the ideas that have come out of this group, whether or not there should be an administrator board, or whether the board should stay as-is. Frankly, I'm agnostic on the topic at this point. I think it's probably a better issue to address as we get closer to 2017, whether the board should change, whether there's value in changing the board or not. And then lastly, there's a lot of language that needs to be updated in the JPA, sort of an overall cleanup of that document. So that's the direction that we're going right now, and I think what I wanted to conclude with is a little bit talking about the process, because what I'm doing now is basically sort of a check-in with the council. What's gonna ultimately happen, I believe, is that there'll be sort of final recommendations that'll come from the library director and the administrators group, that is gonna go to the Santa Cruz Public Library JPA Board. And they're gonna endorse it, come up with their own recommendations, and make their decision about what they think should happen to the JPA. From there, what will happen is that there'll be new JPA documents that need to be considered by all of the different jurisdictions that participate. So for the LFA, it's every city in the county, and for the JPA, it would be Santa Cruz, Capitola, Scotts Valley, and the county. And so each one of the city councils for all of those entities would need to approve the JPA before they became effective. So this is really kind of a conceptual check-in on where we're going, and then what would follow out of this would be the processes, that there'd be some sort of recommendation, the public libraries JPA Board will make some sort of final statement, and then we'll have a document that'll go city to city for consideration. So that concludes my presentation, I'm available for questions.
All right, thanks, Jamie. Yeah, Stephanie?
Those meetings aren't televised, are they? They need to be, this is such an important topic, and I think we really need to have the public buy-in on this, about what does the public wanna see for the future, and what kind of a structure do you see? This is a lot of money and a lot of decisions for the future, so, and I am an average public-access government television watcher, so, and I've never seen it, so I would recommend you put some bucks behind that, because, and let people know when it's gonna be on, so that people can have a chance to, to see what's going on. I'd love to hear some of those discussions.
We would need only to move the meetings to one of the council chambers.
That's what I was gonna say, do you move them around? Do you rotate them around?
Well, library to library, not council chamber to council chamber. So if we wanted to televise, we could certainly arrange something between Santa Cruz, Scotts Valley, Capitola, to hold it in their chambers where we have community access.
Don't they already have, didn't we already have, don't we have drops in the new Scotts Valley library?
We do not have broadcast facilities.
Yet, yet.
Yeah, we'll see.
Yeah. Okay, well, I think, I mean, I think these are really important meetings, so I would really hope that we could, that we could advertise them, so we could get some more people to come.
Any other questions on the staff report? I have a question, Jamie, about cleaning up, you mentioned cleaning up the maintenance of effort allocations. How would that affect the city of Capitola?
The simple answer is it wouldn't. The city of Capitola doesn't, we don't pay any of our general fund into the maintenance of effort. Our contribution is made through the County Library Fund, where our residents pay a little sliver of their 1% property tax towards it. Indirectly, what it would do is, is sort of increase the value of our contribution, in that Santa Cruz and Watsonville effectively would be putting more into our library system than they do today, should there be more dollars available to provide library services in our community.
Okay, thank you. So, are there members of the public that would like to address the council on this issue? Teresa, did you want to present to us?
No, I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, Jacques, hi, Jacques.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Yeah, the article in the newspaper that Jamie talked about did have some concern, this sort of background issue that I didn't know anything about. So I definitely agree with Stephanie, there should be some public involvement, and certainly, I really thank you very much for bringing this report and the discussion behind it. So, anything the council could do to, you know, push public participation and disclosure, is appreciated.
Thank you. Yes, sure.
The Joint Power Board meetings are not televised, but they are audiotaped, and the audiotape of the most recent meeting is posted. And I encourage anybody, it was a very good meeting, very good discussion on all these topics that Jamie was talking about, so I encourage you to listen to the tape. It may not be as fun as video, but they are taped.
I think it would be great, though, to have a meeting someplace like here, where you could videotape it live, and people may watch it, or they can watch the reruns. A lot of times, people watch reruns, too, and there's a lot more people that are willing to do that than listen to an audio, I think.
I understand that, I'm just letting you know that it is available.
Right. Teresa, and it's available on the website?
Yes, it's available on the website, yeah.
Could you give everybody the website address, if they wanted to?
Santa Cruz, www.santacruzpl.org.
Okay, right, great, thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion and comments. And just, I mean, Jamie, to clarify, my understanding is that the decision to reorganize or evaluate the board composition has been tabled at this time.
That sure looks the way it's gone to me. And, you know, at this point, it looks to me like what the focus is on amending the LFA, to deal with the maintenance of effort, and to deal with this bond issue. You know, frankly, 2017 is several years away, and we can tackle the overall JPA and those issues down the road. We'll see whether all the various member entities are all on the same page, but I think that the, Michael can speak to this, 'cause he was at the board meeting this week, I think the JPA Board is pretty unified in that approach.
Right. Is that correct? Yeah, I just, I think it's important that everybody know that they're not rushing into making any decisions at this point about reorganizing the Joint Powers Board, and that, you know, the community and all the members of the public have an opportunity to really weigh in on that question as it comes up. And it may certainly be a part of the discussion about the potential bond measure that's gonna come up.
We were trying to separate it from the bond measure issue, because we feel it's a different issue, and we didn't wanna muddy the waters. And it may or may not become something that becomes a pass in the years to come, Mr. Mayor, but at this point in time, we're focused on new libraries and upgraded libraries, and that's where our efforts will be.
Absolutely, yes, and, you know, and the survey results, I think, are very positive about the potential, I mean, it seems like the majority of the community values and supports the library system, and is willing to look at, you know, additional bond measure to help upgrade and improve our libraries for the future, and really, we're talking about for our kids. So, with that, if there are no other comments on it?
I guess the only other point which maybe was lost in there is, is that frankly, this is really, you know, so far this direction, in my opinion, is really terrific for our community. It's potentially a really, real windfall for us to get our library done, and hopefully a way that really gives us a 21st century library that we can all be incredibly proud of. And I think that these other fixes, although they're technical to the maintenance of effort, really do help leverage Capitola's dollars that we invest in our libraries, so that we'll have more money available for better service in our entire community. So, I'm enthusiastic about the process so far, and I'm enthusiastic about the poll results, and I think the direction is solid right now.
All right, that sounds good. And one other thing to let the community know is that the city council has established a library advisory committee, which is going to be meeting actually fairly soon. So, I mean, watch the scroll in our agendas for the time when that committee will be meeting. If you wanted to have some voice in where and the design and the funding for the new Capitola library, then that's really the purview that they're gonna be discussing. So, hopefully, that can be accessible, and everybody here in our community can participate in that discussion. And Mike is on that committee as well.
That's Dennis.
So, and Dennis as well. Thank you, guys. Well, thank you, Teresa, for being here this evening, and we look forward to the next stage of this effort, yes. With that, we will move on to the next regular agenda item, which is to consider a resolution adopting the city's general plan update, and the resolution certifying the final environmental impact report, adopting the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program and statement of overriding considerations. The recommended action is to adopt the resolutions, which would be to adopt both the city's general plan and adopt the environmental impact report. So with that, we will begin with a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Story, and council members. Tonight's presentation will be broken down into six parts. First, I'll provide background information regarding the general plan update. Next, I'll provide an overview of the proposed framework and organization of the general plan, followed by a summary of key changes proposed in the plan. I'll then present floor area ratio information, followed by a summary of the general plan budget status, and then we'll conclude with presentation with staff and planning commission California planning law requires every city and county in the state to adopt and maintain a general plan. The general plan is required to be a long-term, comprehensive plan to guide the physical development of the city. The general plan must include seven mandatory elements, land use, circulation, open space, conservation, safety, noise, and housing. General plans may also include optional elements as desired by specific jurisdictions, and a typical planning horizon for a general plan is 20 years. Capitola adopted its first general plan in 1964. The city completed its first general plan update 10 years later in 1974, and concluded its most recent update in 1989. The city embarked on its current update effort in the fall of 2010 to replace the 1989 general plan, which is now over 24 years old. To help define the community's visions, values, and long-term goals for Capitola, the city council appointed an 11-member general plan advisory committee to promote public participation and to represent the city's various neighborhoods and interests. Over the past three-plus years, the G-PAC held 19 public meetings to help guide the general plan update process. In addition to the G-PAC meetings, the city also held several public workshops and study sessions, as well as multiple public hearings before the planning commission and city council. The G-PAC held its final meeting on November 12, 2013, and offered a unanimous endorsement of the general plan update. On November 21, staff presented the general plan update and key policy issues to a special joint session of the planning commission and city council. Although there was not complete consensus on all issues, both the planning commission and city council provided staff with clear policy direction on most issues, and directed staff to initiate public review of the general plan and EIR. The general plan update and EIR were circulated for a 60-day public review period between December 19 and February 19, 2014. In total, 13 comment letters were received, including five from public agencies and eight from private citizens. The vast majority of those comments received were editorial in nature, and no significant issues were identified regarding the adequacy of the general plan or the EIR. Responses to all comments received are included in your staff report packet. Staff has also completed the final EIR for your consideration, and final revisions to the general plan will be made following city council adoption. The primary objectives of the general plan update are to establish goals, policies, and actions which embody Capitola's fundamental visions and values, to modernize and reorganize the document to bring it into current legal standards, and to make it more user-friendly. The general plan update would also add a sustainability focus, which is responsive to issues related to climate change and resource conservation, and to provide a balanced approach to community, environmental, and economic interests. The general plan update is founded on guiding principles which were developed through public workshops, stakeholder input, and the G-PAC process. Guiding principles are broad vision and value statements, which serve as the basis for underlying goals, policies, and actions in the general plan. An example of a guiding principle in the general plan is to protect and enhance the quality of life in residential neighborhoods. Goals in the general plan are statements of desired future conditions which are intended to complement and advance the underlying guiding principles. A goal in the general plan intended to promote protection and enhancement of residential neighborhoods is to ensure that new development respects the existing scale, density, and character of residential neighborhoods. General plan goals are implemented by policies and actions. Policies are specific statements intended to guide land use decisions and represent the city's commitment to a particular topic or issue. An example of a policy in the general plan intended to protect residential neighborhoods is to ensure the architectural character of new development complements the unique qualities of its neighborhood. Actions implement the goals and policies of the general plan and are measures or procedures intended to achieve general plan goals. An example of a general plan action item intended to ensure new development respects the character of residential neighborhoods is to develop residential design guidelines. The proposed general plan includes updates to six of the seven mandated elements, and includes a new economic development chapter as an optional element. The seventh mandatory element, the housing element, is required by state law to be updated every eight years, and is therefore on a separate track than the general plan. The housing element was last updated in 2010, and is due to be updated again by December 2015. The general plan also includes a new land use map and revised and consolidated land use designations. The proposed general plan update would place increased emphasis on protection of residential neighborhoods, transportation alternatives, and sustainable development practices to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, incorporate goals for energy and water conservation, provide additional protections for historic and cultural resources, promote maintenance and enhancement of parks, open spaces, and environmental resources, and establish appropriate floor area ratios. The general plan update would not allow increased density in single-family residential neighborhoods, and would largely maintain existing commercial intensities, with the exception of the 41st Avenue corridor. Avenue corridor. The primary remaining policy issue to resolve is establishing appropriate floor area ratios. State planning law requires its local agencies to include maximum development standards in their general plans. This is typically established through densities in residential areas and floor area ratios in commercial mixed-use and industrial areas. Floor area ratio as shown in this illustration describes the relationship between the total building area and the total lot area. For example, a floor area ratio of .5 would allow a single-story structure to occupy 50% of its lot, or a two-story structure to occupy 25% of its lot. The city's current general plan establishes a citywide .5 floor area ratio limit, with the exception of the Village, which has no floor area ratio limits. The .5 floor area ratio is not reflective of actual on-the-ground built conditions and would be inconsistent with the city's goals to promote sustainable and economically beneficial infill development. It is important to keep in mind that floor area ratios in the general plan are not entitlements, but rather provide a maximum building intensity that may be achieved if all other development standards are meant and if authorized by city decision-makers. The city has a number of other controls to regulate building intensity, including zoning ordinance standards for height, setbacks, parking, landscaping, and open space, as well as design guidelines related to building form, mass, and articulation. In addition, all new commercial mixed-use development in Capitola would be subject to a discretionary review process, which requires Planning Commission and/or City Council approval, with findings that intensity would be in harmony with existing neighborhood To develop appropriate baseline floor area ratio, staff evaluated the existing built conditions in several areas of the city. During the November meeting with the Planning Commission and City Council, there was considerable discussion regarding floor area ratios in the Village and along 41st Avenue. This slide shows approximate floor area ratios of existing buildings in the Village. As you can see, typical floor area ratios range from 1 to 2, depending on whether a site is developed with a one- or two-story structure. There are a few sites, such as the Mercantile, Quality Market, and David Ling Realty Office, that have lower floor area ratios, largely because a portion of their sites are occupied by surface parking lots. Based on existing built conditions and considering that first-floor residential uses generally are not allowed due to flood regulations, the proposed general plan update would establish a Village floor area ratio of 2.0. The next two slides show existing floor area ratios along 41st Avenue. This slide shows the area north of Capitola Road. As you can see, properties along the 41st Avenue corridor generally have much lower floor area ratios due to the presence of expansive, street-facing parking lots. There are a number of properties south of Capitola Road which support higher floor area ratios, notably the Best Western and Fairfield ends have floor area ratios of approximately 2. Nonetheless, building intensity along the stretch of 41st is still relatively low, especially when considering the availability of public transportation and public service establishments. One of the key goals of the general plan update is to promote the transformation of 41st Avenue to feature more street-facing and pedestrian-friendly retail and mixed-use development. Accordingly, the general plan establishes higher intensity limits in this area to encourage beneficial redevelopment projects. Proposed floor area ratios would be 2.0 in the regional commercial designation north of Capitola Road and 1.5 in the community commercial designation south of Capitola This chart shows existing and proposed floor area ratio limits in the general plan update. The far-right column shows the maximum intensity allowed under the proposed increased floor area ratio allowance, which we'll discuss in more detail in the following slides. The general plan includes a provision for an increased floor area ratio allowance to provide future decision-makers with the flexibility to consider well-designed projects which offer significant community and economic benefits. The provision was initially proposed for any property in the Village or along 41st Avenue. However, due to concerns raised by the G-PAC and members of the public, additional restrictions were added. As currently proposed, the increased floor area ratio allowance would only be eligible for hotels in the Village, or properties located on the west side of 41st Avenue or which front the 41st Avenue-Capitola Road intersection. In addition, requests for increased floor area ratio would require City Council approval, with findings that the increased floor area ratio would result in a superior project with substantial community benefits, and that the project would significantly enhance economic vitality, and that the project is designed to minimize adverse impacts to neighboring Following the November Planning Commission-City Council meeting, staff performed a closer examination of the 41st Avenue corridor to examine opportunities and constraints for increased floor area ratio limits. The next three slides will show the residential-commercial interface along the 41st Avenue with an approximate 100-foot setback depicted, to show where greater development intensity could be accommodated while still providing separation between adjacent residential uses. This slide shows the area around 41st Avenue and Clare Street. As shown in this graphic, the area north of Clare Street offers very limited opportunities for increased intensity without being situated close to residential uses. The area south of Clare's, however, has adequate space to accommodate new street-facing development and expansive setbacks between residential uses. Moving south down 41st Avenue, the area around the Capitola Road intersection also has adequate space for increased building intensities with expanded setbacks. The southern end of 41st Avenue near the intersection of Jade Street also has areas which could provide adequate separation between commercial and residential neighborhoods. The Planning Commission had considerable debate regarding floor area ratios at their April 3 hearing on the general plan. Ultimately, the Commission voted to recommend that the council reduce the baseline floor area ratios along north 41st Avenue from 2.0 to 1.5, and to reduce the increased floor area ratio allowance from 3.0 to 2.0. The Commission also voted to reduce the baseline floor area ratio south of 41st, or on south 41st Avenue from 1.5 to 1, and the increased floor area ratio allowance from 2.5 to 1.5. There are three primary issues related to floor area ratio to consider. First is to determine appropriate baseline floor area ratio limits to regulate maximum allowed building intensity. The second issue is decide whether the general plan should include a provision for increased floor area ratio allowance, and if so, where should the provision apply? The council has a number of options to address floor area ratio issues. First, the council could consider accepting the proposed floor area ratio limits as proposed in the general plan. A second option would be to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation to reduce floor area ratios and to retain the provision for the increased floor area ratio allowance. Alternatively, the council could modify base floor area ratios and the increased floor area ratio allowance to limits the council would find to be more appropriate. Finally, the council could eliminate the increased floor area ratio allowance provision and set maximum base floor area ratio limits which provide adequate capacity to accommodate future growth. In terms of where increased floor area ratio allowance would apply, the council could accept the limitations specified in the proposed general plan, which would restrict the provision to hotels only in the Village and the west side of 41st Avenue and the 41st Avenue-Capitola Road intersection. Alternatively, the council could allow the provision for mixed-use projects in the Village and on both sides of 41st Avenue if expanded setbacks were provided to protect existing residential neighborhoods. In terms of the floor area ratio issue, staff recommends to the City Council accept the Planning Commission's recommendation, with a modification to the increased floor area ratio allowance from 1.5 to 2.0 on south 41st Avenue in recognition of existing building intensities of the Fairfield and Best Western ends, and to allow future development of a similar hotel in this area. Staff would also recommend that the increased floor area ratio allowance be available to properties on either side of 41st Avenue, provided that adequate setbacks were provided. I also wanted to provide the council with a brief overview on the budget status. The city's consultant contract with Placeworks, formerly DCNE, the Planning Center, includes funding to complete the general plan, zoning ordinance update, a climate action plan, and the Local Coastal Program Amendment. The total contract value is $892,000, which is comprised of $674,000 from general plan maintenance fees and $218,000 in grant monies. To date, $805,477 has been expended, leaving $86,590 remaining in the budget. Immediately following adoption of the general plan, staff will turn its focus toward completion of the zoning ordinance update, and work on the climate action plan will also resume this summer. Once the zoning ordinance is adopted by the council, staff will process an LCP amendment through the Coastal Commission to incorporate the new zoning ordinance into the Local Coastal Program. As you recall, Placeworks agreed during the November budget discussion to provide the city with a $25,000 credit and to withhold 10% on all future invoices. Placeworks has offered their commitment to complete the work within budget and is contractually obligated to do so. Therefore, staff is not requesting any additional contract funding to complete the scope of In conclusion, staff finds that the proposed general plan update before you this evening is a product of extensive public participation, which meets current legal standards, provides the public decision-makers and staff with a more user-friendly document, and fulfills the community's desires to place increased emphasis on sustainability and protections for residential neighborhoods, finite environmental resources, and historic and cultural amenities. Therefore, staff concurs with the Planning Commission's recommendation to certify the EIR and to adopt the city's general plan update. I am joined tonight by Ben Noble from Placeworks, and we are available to answer any questions. I should also note that David Early from Placeworks had planned to be here tonight, but he's unfortunately bedridden and was unable to be here and sends his regrets. That concludes my presentation, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. So the question is from council at this point. Yes, Michael.
Rich, is this our last shot of the general plan, the way you're proposing it? That if we adopt the EIR, that the general plan is now adopted? And can we not make comments on the final EIR and then have the general plan as a piece brought back to us in another meeting?
The council certainly could do that. It's fully at your discretion how you want to consider and make any changes that you would desire.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Dennis.
I'd like to just follow up on my comment in that this is fine for an EIR document, but there's nothing here that you could hand the public and say, "This is our general plan." In other words, it's full of editorial corrections, it's full of comments from outside agencies. Those things should be, you know, we should have a final document, I think, for approval before we move forward. So, but as far as certifying the EIR, I think it's appropriate to us to do that. But I think the general plan needs to come back in whole so we can, you know, we have a readable document that the public can see before we approve it.
Yeah, I understand that there was some confusion, and I apologize for the misunderstanding. During the public review period, we distributed copies of the general plan to the council members and Planning Commission and G-PAC. That document has been unchanged. We have agreed to make a number of editorial revisions through the response to comment period. Those changes are included in the staff report, and those are being incorporated, and it's a public review draft. However, we could certainly return with a finalized document that takes all those changes and puts them into the document, and the council could then adopt a final general plan.
Could I comment about another massive printing endeavor? Please, don't give us anything like this ever again, okay? This is chloroform in print. Don't do it to us, please.
Dennis?
A couple of things, Rich. In dealing with the FAR, would you go over the reasoning behind the 2.0 instead of existing 3.0 in the Village? We're still allowed in FEMA floodplain to build on the lower floor, it's just you can't, we can't build residential. So that FEMA floodplain really doesn't affect the use of the lower floor?
The baseline floor area ratio that we proposed for the Village was 2.0, and I think that's reflective of most of the two-story buildings that you see today in the Village. Under the increased floor area ratio allowance, it went up to 3. The idea there was that we may have hotel development, certainly on the old theater site, that would likely exceed a 2.0 floor area ratio. Whether it would come in at 2.5 or 3.0, we really don't know. We wanted to provide capacity for a project like that to at least be considered by a future city council.
And in discussion of the FAR, the discussion goes no farther than the land use's designation. It doesn't go how the FAR is calculated.
Right. The floor area ratio calculation is defined in the city's zoning ordinance, and that's something that I think we're going to take a close look when we update the ordinance.
Okay. And then Planning Commission's determination of the 1.5 on 41st, can you give a little reasoning behind why that was?
There was, there was some differences of opinion amongst Planning Commission members on what those numbers should be, and it's difficult to pick a number that's appropriate everywhere and also covers a large corridor like 41st Avenue. I think the general feeling amongst the majority of the Planning Commission was that a 1.5 would provide adequate building intensity south of Capitola Road. The only concern I would present is that there are some hotels that are around 2.0. We are aware that there are some property owners that have at least contemplated building a hotel in the future there, and we think it would be fair that they have the same building rights that those previous hotels had.
So you're not agreeing with the Planning Commission's?
I would suggest that a 2.0 floor area ratio south Capitola Road would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Dan.
Just a clarification, can you go to the last slide?
The recommendation slide?
Right. I'm going to lead you. On this slide, it says, "Staff concurs with Planning Commission recommendation," but previously I thought the recommendation was to go to what you just said, the original design, so I'm confused.
Yeah. So they, the recommendation on the general plan itself is a certified EIR and adopted general plan with some changes, and amongst those changes were to modify the floor area ratio limits.
Okay, so that's not accurate there to, "Concurs with Planning Commission's recommendation," because their recommendation was to change that number.
We concur with their recommendation to certify the EIR and adopt the general plan. We just think that the recommendation of floor area ratio should be modified slightly.
Because earlier, there was another recommendation, I was confused by this last sentence. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Good.
Can you bring the slide back for the FAR and the Planning Commission's recommendations on them? And the Fairfield and Best Western are at 2, are they not?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Rich, I have a question about that. When we looked at that slide of 41st Avenue, it seemed that floor ratios were small, and that seemed to be constrained by parking requirements, large parking lots, you know, for the business question. And so it would seem natural that if you're going to have adequate parking, you're going to need a smaller floor area ratio. The Fairfield end is 2.0, but I think there may be a certain sense that there is not adequate parking for that. So would we be kind of perpetuating or sacrificing the parking requirements in order to maintain or increase the floor area ratio of 2.0?
I don't think so. I think, you know, that comes in with the more fine-grained design details. I mean, it depends on the type of the project, too. The Fairfield has some underground parking. That could be one method to provide an alternative to the large surface parking lots we see along 41st, many of which I think are overparked. They're often have a lot of vacancies. Parking structures could be added in the future. I think we would always look very closely at parking to make sure that we don't spill over into neighborhoods, but it could be designed within a higher floor area ratio.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Stephanie.
So the 100-foot buffer area you're showing there is just a possible building area to expand the existing businesses there. You're just showing the area that is the buffer between the residences and a possible commercial building.
Correct. As you may recall, when we had our joint meeting, there was some discussion about, "Well, is it only going to be on the east side at the intersection with Capitola Road? Couldn't it be somewhere else?" So that prompted us to look a little bit closer at it, and, you know, some of these parking lots are large enough where you could provide, whether it be 100-foot, 150-foot, or whatever, a large setback between those residential areas and allow some higher intensity development without adversely impacting those neighborhoods. So this is just basically an illustration to demonstrate that there- So this is just basically an illustration to demonstrate that there's a lot of area there to work with.
Possibly. I'd be very cautious about that. I mean, we saw that before with other businesses back there that wanted to expand, and when you have adjacent neighbors, you have, just have to be very careful.
What are the height restrictions on 41st Avenue? I believe...
The current height in the CC Zone District is 40 feet, but there's an allowance that the city council can go, can go higher based on some findings that can be made.
And the Fairfield is an example of one of the higher projects on 41st Avenue.
Certainly, I recall I was the planning director when that went through, and I do recall that it went to the city council because of the necessity of the finding to go a couple feet over the 40. You know, I don't know how tall Sears Building is, for example, some of those other existing built structures. Do keep in mind that the height will trail in the zoning, and the general plan itself doesn't address height.
Right. But potentially, a larger flora ratio is going to drive up the height on any given lot?
It could, but not necessarily.
Right, not necessarily, but the tendency would be, in order to, if you allowed a greater flora ratio, the potential or the tendency is going to be to have taller structures along 41st Avenue. Okay, thank you.
But do keep in mind that I think we have some examples in the village where we have 27-foot height limits, that buildings have FARs of close to two, two and a half maybe even. So certainly, there's a connection between those, but there's a relationship between the two, I think.
Sure, okay. At this point, are there any other questions on the staff report?
I just have one.
Yeah, go ahead, Dennis.
And looking at the document, but I don't have the whole document here, but in the transportation element, there doesn't seem to be much mention of the Union Pacific Corridor or now the Transportation Corridor. Why would that, such an essential transportation mode in our, in our community in the future? It seems like that, that should pretty, have a pretty high presence in it.
There is discussion of the rail corridor, I think, in several areas of the general plan. We have some discussion in the land use element as well as the mobility element, both in relationship to supporting a future passenger rail service and encouraging the rail trail.
And what section was that in? I'm sorry, Rich.
There's discussion in both the land use element and in the mobility element. And it may be in the open space conservation element, too, as it relates to the trail.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? If not, what I'd like to do is maybe open it up to the public to speak to us on the general plan. So I'll invite any members of the public that would like to address the council on the general plan. Yep, please come up.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ron Skelton. When this whole effort of the general plan update was commenced, I took a pretty active interest in what was going on. I attended the workshops and so on and so forth, and I presented a paper at one point that described how other cities develop a metric for their assessment of the quality of life and living in their communities. As the meetings progressed with the process we've been through, I got more disheartened because it seemed to me that very little attention was being given to the actual parameters that define our quality of living here. And I've just listened to this presentation, which is totally consumed in presenting the floor area ratios, as if this was the dominant characteristic of quality of life here. So overall, I'm very disappointed and disheartened, but I won't give up because I believe we have a sensible community here and a responsible staff. But I would like to see some more effort being placed on actual evaluation of the quality of life of living here in our different areas of residence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adam Samuels. I live at 505 El Salto Drive. Council members, staff, thank you. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to everyone who was here and not here, because this is obviously a huge effort, and a lot of people's involvement are here, and I think it's...
Can you close your...
Sure. Huge amount of work to be recognized, and a challenging situation. I think however long it takes, you're never satisfied, but you have to declare it into the process. The thing, if I could ask, Rich, there was the slide where you had sort of the pyramid of the goals and values, if you could just show that for a sec. I think the thing that's heartening, to me at least, is if we can keep in line these guiding principles, you know, and the specific examples, I think, were great, to protect and enhance the quality of life in residential neighborhoods. That, to me, if we can keep that in mind as we go to implement all this, that will mean a lot, you know? And even the first goal about ensuring the new development respects the existing scale, density, and character of the neighborhoods. To me, you know, the residential, protecting our residential neighborhoods is a critical thing that I'm concerned about. I am, you know, as a resident, very aware of the importance of our having the commercial benefits and being able to build and develop, but I want to make sure that we maintain the neighborhoods. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'm going to close the microphone, bring it back up for council discussion. Yes, Mike.
Another question of staff, and, you know, one of the questions that was brought up with the responses to the draft EIR regarded a zoning issue on Bay Avenue of a certain property. Would that not be more appropriate during the zoning reevaluation of our zoning ordinance?
That was, that was our view of the matter, and the planning commission agreed with that. We did have the property owner at 10-412 Bay Avenue, right adjacent to Gail's Bakery, who was interested in a land use designation change to allow future development of low-intensity offices or a transient use-type hotel, bed, and breakfast. Currently, a hotel or bed and breakfast would be allowed as a conditional use on that site. Offices are not, but those are both regulated by the zoning ordinance, not the general plan.
Right, so it's not appropriate to even address that tonight with regard to the EIR or the general plan, even though we might be in favor of something like that further down the line?
Not in my opinion, and I've spoken to Mr. Redding, and he's fine with tackling it as part of the zoning ordinance.
And what I'm just trying to do, Mr. Mayor, is figure out, you know, so we can focus our, our comments, and I guess this is the comment time, so I guess I'll go forward. There was also a question brought out, which is very much part of the EIR process, and that is the way we value our beach as an asset to our community. And while we noted it as a goal, I think that the protection of our beach and with all of the attendant activities that go on there should be, rather than a goal, be a priority. I mean, when we come down to it, it's about the ocean, and that's probably why most people want to live here. It's not because there's a mall here, we know that, okay? I'd like to wholeheartedly agree with Ron Skelton, and I think that, that the change in thought process for me, as I was reading through this, is not so much to maintain the quality of our residential life here, but to potentially improve it. Just to keep it at the status quo is not always enough, which is why on 41st Avenue, I'm in favor of the planning commission's ratcheting down, and I see it goes all the way up to two, which is the largest buildings we have. I don't, I'm not really interested in which side of 41st Avenue it is. I am keenly interested on that 100-foot buffer. I think that's our biggest challenge here, because we're so small. Anything we do commercially impacts the neighborhoods. We have to keep a good, respectful distance, even to, so far as to increase the buffer that we've created already. I had a question in the EIR regarding the three bus lines you indicate we have. I'd like someone to show me those bus lines, or show me a bus of three different numbers that actually goes through Capitola on a regular basis. I'll leave that to you. We may want to take another look at that. Okay, it's been a long time since all three of those lines actually existed in Capitola. The historic element was mentioned quite a bit in the comments from the public, as well as in the draft EIR. I think that we're still in the business of confusing residents and applicants, people who want to live here, people who do live here already. We have a good list of historic properties. We have no real listing. We are really deficient, and for someone to come in thinking they're buying an old beach cottage to remodel, and they find out that somebody might think that it might be historic in some interesting way, can be shocking, and, you know, I'd rather let everybody know upfront. So I think we need to pay attention to that in the EIR, and I know you corrected some languages, or as listed versus a list, two significantly different concepts. And again, this might also be a comment more germane to the zoning ordinance, but the property we're sitting on right now, I have no necessarily keen interest on doing anything dramatic or exciting with it, but I think we need to leave it open, since this will be a 20-year document, no doubt, to future councils. I know we're all keenly interested in potential parking structures, so this property falls in that consideration. Should this property not, when the zoning ordinance comes up, be zoned with its adjacent properties rather than set apart as just for a city hall? Those are my comments, and I don't understand how anybody gets through this and makes sense of it. Is it a million dollars' worth? Eh, we'll give it that for now, but thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Stephanie?
I was really hoping that we'd continue this, that we would give our comments tonight and have some discussion, because there's way too much in here for us to, I think, do it in just in one sitting. And I know that we've gotten a lot of comments from the audience, but also, I really miss the G-PAC. You know, I'd really like them to be part of our conversation, and the planning commission is to be part of our conversation, because I know that they all had some really good thoughts, they all worked together on everything, and the G-PAC had some really different opinions, but they put in a lot of time on this, and I really want to respect that. And so I, too, would like, to share Dennis's idea, that I'd like to have a, at some point, a final document, and, but we can certainly have the letters and their, and their responses separate. But I think, I think we need, we do need to have a little more work done, and as others have said, you know, where's the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary, and where's the Sanctuary Scenic Trail in here? It's got, it's got to be, it's got to be more than, than that. I'd like us to look at possibly rezoning some lots, and so that'll come up, I guess, later on, but, you know, we kind of need to discuss this whole thing, and you're talking about, about change in flora ratio on lower 41st Avenue. I want to look at a map, I want to look and see what the adjacent uses are, I want to see what the adjacent zoning is. I want us to have a whole discussion about that, because future councils or planning commissions are going to look at that and say, "Well, that very wise city council and planning commission changed that FAR to in that lower 41st Avenue area to two from 1.5." And so what were they thinking, and what are we going to do about all that? Because, you know, we had, we had that, we had this discussion years ago about this. So, anyway, it's really important, it's really important whether you say 1.5 or two, or 2.5, because, because that's going to, that's going to lead the whole discussion of density, which is, that gets us back to square one, which is people say they like cute, quaint, lovely Capitola, and then you're going to change the zoning to make it so dense? You know, we have to be really, really careful about that. So, anyway, I'd like to look at, when that comes up, but council members can go by and look at 4150 and 4160 Clear Street. Those are zone commercial, we do need to take a look at that. They do a butt residential, and they're an eyesore. And please, please go by and take a look at, at those properties. One has an address on it, and the other is next door, but it doesn't. But there are some other things like that around town that kind of are the same problem that we have up at the, by the corp yard, where we have a little bit of residential and a little bit of commercial and a little bit of neighborhood commercial. You know, we really need to look at those areas really carefully, so that if something changes in the future. I don't mind having zoning less than maybe what others would like now, because we do always have that possibility that you can ask for a variance. So if, if a Fairfield did come in and say, gee, we'd really like to do this, and we really liked it, we have that option. So I don't think we need to get tied into having something else here when we have the option to be flexible if we want to later on with those kind of things. I'd like to look at the whole issue of front yards that are, front yard setbacks, but there's side yards because the way the house is turned, and just at some point, take, have the planning commission take a look at that, and, and see what, we can come up with that. So anyway, I have a number of issues that I'd like to hear about other commissioners, but it's really, it's just really hard to do this piecemeal, and so I'm not willing to certify an EIR tonight. I'm not sure if I am in the next month or so, but I'd like to know the timeline when we're going to see everything else, because that kind of leads into just that whole discussion of increasing the FAR. Well, what else, you know, what else is going to be happening there? I mean, I don't know, because we don't have it all.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make...
Yes, Ben.
...one point. The question of FARs and variances is one that came up during the planning commission meeting as well, and we had a discussion about that, and there is not the possibility to receive a variance for content that is within the general plan. A variance is only for development standards that are contained in the zoning code, things like height, setbacks, parking requirements, but if there is a policy in the general plan, like a maximum FAR, then that's the maximum, and it's not possible to exceed that with a variance.
Right. Just to be clear, Ben, I mean, the, the general plan is a constitutional building document. It's an enforceable document, which any developer or private citizen could impose upon the council, future councils, if they attempted to amend the zoning or approve variances that went beyond it. Is that correct?
Yes, it is referred to as the Constitution for Development. It's the statement of fundamental city policy related to development and conservation, so it is, it is the law of the land.
Yeah, thank you for confirming that. Ed, any thoughts at this time?
Yeah, a couple of comments. You know, first, I want to acknowledge the general plan committee for bringing this document to us and DCNA. A lot of work went into this, and I look at it more of a philosophy document, like Mr. Skelton alluded to. You know, there was people's visions of Capitola was what, when I was on the committee, was what came across, you know, what they wanted to preserve, what they saw. That morphed into where the general plan committee started developing the nuts and bolts and, and the specifics, but I think, you know, and Councilman Termini alluded to this also, you know, we want to protect what people see here in Capitola, you know, part of it is the ocean. This document is a guideline for us to do that. When I first looked at it, you know, I was willing to, you know, pretty much accept the document and work with it and its guidelines. Now, certain items have become highlighted, specifically the FAR is one that popped out via the planning commission, and whenever somebody changes something, you have to look at what's behind that. You know, the goal that I think is not to do something that ties the hands of previous councils or future councils, it's, you know, it's just give some guidelines that prudent decisions can be made. So I, it's got my focus now, because I am agreeing with the policies and the goals here, and we want to maintain the neighborhoods. We want to protect the neighborhoods, and there are some existing properties that we've approved, and these existing properties, at least in my opinion, have worked out. So when we take something away, that, that's a red flag for me, so I, that's why the FAR is of concern to me now. Whether we can approve the document, like I said, to me, it's a philosophy document, it's a guideline to go with. Most of the things we're going to change, except for the FAR here, I think are going to probably come out in our zoning ordinance. It's going to be more specific about what we do than this document. This is a guideline, this is the voice of the people, this is what we should look at. So I'm, you know, I'm, I would be in a position to approve a document, so I'm just, I came here tonight to do that, but if there wants to be more discussion on items, we can certainly do that. I'm not sure where we go with the FAR, and I think I would...
I'm not sure where we go with the FAR, and I, I think I would be more consistent with the original recommendation, with the staff recommendation, leave that there. Other than that, any comments?
Okay, thank you, Ed. I'm getting a sense that there's a majority movement here to continue this item to a future meeting?
I don't know about the, I mean, I have no problem with accepting the EIR, as long it is, as it is separated from the final approval of the general plan. If you, if that's not something that's possible for us to do, if we have to take them together, then yes, continuing the whole thing. The, the EIR itself, I have no problem with, with it, with the small changes that have been mentioned up here. The general plan, I'm not ready to adopt it, because there's even some, you know, that Mr. Mayor has brought up, very important point, which is, it is the absolute maximum that we are bound by law to remain below, FAR being one of them. That being the case, we need to, on the one hand, not cavalierly accept it at a lower rate, because that's kind of where we'd like to see it, but we need to set it at a level where we never want to go over, and I like the idea of keeping it at a lower FAR with special provisions, as Stephanie said, for a particularly interesting and important project. So can we approve and accept the EIR without adopting the general plan?
I would suggest as a measure of caution not to certify the EIR tonight, and to certify it with the adoption of the general plan. That way, if there are any changes to the general plan, we can make corresponding revisions to the EIR, and everything remains whole.
Can we each give you our, and you, I'm sure someone's been making notes there, but you've noted comments that have been made so far and, and future comments, so that when it all comes back as a piece, we can see those changes?
Certainly.
Thank you. Just to be clear, the, the actual, the draft general plan will be updated with the current changes that were proposed in the EIR.
Yeah, what I, what I would recommend to the council, if you desire to continue the item, is that we will go back, we will incorporate all the changes that we've committed to making through the public review process, plus those that we heard tonight, so that the next time that we meet, you'll have a document in front of you, we can do it and track changes, so that those revisions are clearly, are very clear to see, and then you'll be in a position, hopefully, to adopt it that evening.
Can we have it as a special meeting, Mr. Mayor? I think this is important enough where that should be the, a special meeting is the only thing that we do, and that we make sure that we heavily publicize it, because...
Well, maybe what, I'll work with the city manager, I mean, to see if we could structure a regular meeting to only have this item, but if we're, if that's not possible to do, we'll look at, kind of coordinate a special meeting. And actually, a meeting, and I, piggybacking on what Stephanie mentioned, and, I mean, giving special invitation to the GPAC members, the planning commissioners, to, you know, intend and give public comment, putting it on the scroll, trying to just get out more information. And for folks that are in the audience here tonight, yeah, please let your neighbors know, tell everybody, this is a big and important thing, it's going to be binding on us for the next 20, 30 years. And when we have a date certain, encourage everyone to come out, to review it, it's also on the website, and to give us a comment on it. So Dennis, do you have a?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One is, you know, we endured a general plan that did not do us bad for 50 years, so 1968, I think, was the last one, it was running, some in that range. And in many ways, planning just happens, in other words, economics kind of determine uses and that type of thing, and we control it to a certain point. The establishment of 41st Avenue was on purpose, as a higher density resident, a higher density commercial area, and, and for our city, it's worked, it's worked very well, it's given us an economic base, everything. I think we've been very good over the years of protecting our neighborhoods. There's, there's cases that we haven't been, but on, on the whole, our land use, if you go around town, has worked quite well. The village has survived, and it's survived because of the visual character of that village, and also its proximity, and the visual character is correct, is created by that FAR, and it's created by the, the high-density, close type of living situation that we have, different than our residential, where we require setbacks, and we require height restrictions. So our zoning, our problem has been, is, is, is a zoning ordinance that interprets our general plan, and being able to equitably enforce that, and also establish rules and regulations that are fair, both to the city and the neighboring residents, but also to, to people who come in and apply for, for a project. And I really foresee that that's, that next step is really where we need to get to, to control it, but looking at, looking at downsizing 41st Avenue, well, we haven't seen anything bad happen there. Why, why take something and, and crush it down when we haven't seen it? We can always crush it down, but once it's in this, in this document here, you're, you're stuck with those, with those regulations. And so we, we established 41st to give us high-density, multi-use type of, and it's worked good for us. So we need, we need, what in this document needs to be retained, maintained, are things that has worked in the past. And, and so, as insufficient as the ex, as the, as the former general plan was, it did guide us for a long time on very, very simple terms. And I, I don't see a lot of change in here from, from what we had, and so that kind of tells me that through this whole process, that people like what they have here. They, they really do. I mean, we need corrections to it, and we need a, a fairer process, and we need, we need a better zoning ordinance, but I think in general, the general, the general plan, regardless of environmental regulations that we have, or knowledge about FEMA floodplain that we didn't have in the past, is really the same document that we've always had. And so I'm looking forward to going to the next phase in this thing. I don't want to prolong this thing out, I'm, I'm really okay with the EIR part of this thing, but I would like to see if we came back on this, Mr. Mayor, is, is that we have a complete, I want to see a document, I want, I don't, I don't want this complication of, of comments and back and forth on this. I want to see, I want to see that.
Yeah.
And I want to see that updated, even though we may have to do revision of some, a few pages on it, I want something that you can hand that public, and that public can read that and understand that document when we, when we come back the next time. So I would be in favor of certifying the EIR, but if we don't, if we're, we're chosen not to do that now, and then we should do as recommended with it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
I, just, my comments, and, and one staff I want to thank, Ben, you've been, for, you know, bringing us the plan. I think overall the process, I know it's been long, but it's been very comprehensive and thorough. The actual plan, the draft plan that I read, is also very comprehensive, and it's easy to read as you go through it, so kudos on that. I did want to, and recommendations for the other council members, if you concur, as additional direction to staff. I wanted to follow up on Mr. Skelton's comments about metrics and evaluating the quality of life. We do have that as a guiding principle in the plan, that, that one of our principles for our neighborhoods and housing is to protect and enhance the quality of life, but I am interested in whether particular metrics are, are available, and how do we measure whether or not we are meeting the maintenance of the quality of life. And so if, if there's some from Mr. Skelton that he's passed on to you, maybe you could share them with council members, so for our consideration, and maybe potential incorporation into the plan. On the floor area ratio, I'm particularly interested in, in the village, and the potential hotel in the village, that, that is a huge major project, is going to have big impacts. I would like to ask that we be provided with some sort of schematics or, or elevate, or something showing what would be the density of a 3.0, because that's, as I understand, that's the maximum that would be potentially allowed in the village. What would that look like on that particular acreage? So that we have a sense of what is it really that we are approving? I would like to ask that the, the GPAC members be actually identified in the plan, I think just giving them recognition, this is going to be a long-saying document, that way people in the future will know who to blame. But, no, no, I mean, just as an honor to them, as an appendix of whether, I know that they're referenced in there generally, but I think honoring the citizens who have bothered to take the time, you know, in, in this process. We have changed the name of Pat Cove to something new, I think that should be identified in the plan going forward.
As a park?
And, well, it actually is, Dennis, and, and I think you'd be very pleased how it's written into the plan, that that's a temporary parking lot, and the goal is to actually-
I am very pleased.
Turn it into-
That's half of the name, it's half, it's Park King.
Right, right, right. But it may help, I mean, in the, to identify now that we've changed the name. In certain sections, and, I mean, and I won't go through everyone here, maybe I can send an email to staff, but we talk about this as a 20-to-30-year plan, you know, and maybe that's okay to be general on the, the long-term aspects of it, but then in the guiding principles, it says, these are a statement of core community values to guide in Capitola through the year 2035. That seems like a year-specific, it doesn't really match the 20 or 30-year timeframe, it seems like those should be lined up. I think those are the main, the significant comments that I have right now, and as we move forward in updating this draft, and, and making the public more aware, and when we then bring this back. Yes, Stephanie?
There were also a couple of changes we recommended last time. One was to delete a picture or two that were in there twice, another was to have more of a variety, I think that was Councilmember Ed's suggestion, more variety of photographs, because there was too many of one type and not another. Another that I recommended was to take out the, take out the West Capitola references and change it to North Forties, and that's, it's still there, as, as in both on figure 4.8.1, it's still there as both of them. Were some of those other little, little, and it's there on the text on page 4.8.4, were some of those changes made, or not, not yet?
Yeah, we did change out all the pictures, all the duplicated pictures, and we added more variety to that. I believe the direction was to remove the designation of North Forties, but to put like an also-known-as somewhere in the text, and I believe that change had been made.
But why, but why call it that if it's never been known as that?
We, we can change that whichever way the council would like.
It says West 41st Avenue, I mean, 41st Avenue slash West Capitola, or parentheses, North Forties. I also feel bad, though, that now, now that we have this, this blue map, we didn't really include anybody from that area on the GPAC, and next time I certainly hope we do, because they're just out there in limbo, the people that live in, in the Dean's Lane area, and on 38th Avenue, and off of Capitola Road, there's, you know, not a huge amount, number of them, but I hope next time we can include them in, in one of the areas at least, to have some kind of identity and some kind of a, you know, split, split the representation or something, have half from there and half from someplace else.
Anything else, Stephanie?
No, I don't think so right now.
Okay, so with that, is there a motion to continue this item?
So.
Second?
So there's a motion and a second. Any member of the public wish to speak to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. And we'll let everybody know when the next date is scheduled for the, hopefully, final consideration of the general plan.
And it would be interesting to have the, the plan commissioners here, because they were split. They were, it was not, you know, it wasn't 5-0, they were split, and I think it'd be really interesting for us to hear both sides of those, those arguments.
Right, and I just, is it, is it okay to have the planning committee invite them to come to the council meeting, not as a joint meeting, but as just members of the public to address us on this issue?
Yeah, absolutely, we will invite them, and, and just to clarify, the planning commission's what was unanimous to adopt and certify the EIR, where they did have some difference of opinion with floor area ratio limits, but not the plan itself.
Okay, good. Anything further on this item? Are this meeting, any further comments for this evening? Hearing none, I'm going to adjourn this meeting to the next special budget session of the city council-